The time is now 7:30. I'd like to call our meeting, the meeting of the Downers Grove Public Library Board of Trustees to order. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Yes, trustee Dory here. Trustee Humphreys.
Here.
Trustee Crotea here. Trustee Gavani is absent. Trustee Stapleton here. President Greer.
Here, thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number three, welcoming the visitors to our meeting. Ed, welcome to our meeting.
Thank you.
In a few moments, there'll be an opportunity to speak if you would like to. Before we get on to agenda item number four, I just wanted to make a quick housekeeping announcement, which is our December meeting, we're not going to have a December meeting. So Julie will discuss in more detail.
Logistics.
Logistics. Yeah, exactly, exactly. So we're now on to agenda item number four, approval of last month's minutes. Did anybody have any questions or comments regarding October's minutes?
I wanted to, and I think that was just because of my own comments on understanding trends in libraries, I wanted to verify it wasn't so much a questioning of libraries itself process, but thinking more, you know, five to 10 years down the road vision. So just kind of understanding what you all know about that future or think about that future. I just know what to, from my listening, it sounds so much challenging for me, maybe that's not all, what can we learn from you all that we don't really have a figure on.
Would you approve that? Very good. And Jen, you can just, we'll update that as part of the minutes. A man that's, that's part of.
Yeah, whoever makes the motion can just say amended.
Okay.
And Caitlin already has it been written for me. There is already should be, I just.
Okay, okay. We'll move that we approved the minutes as correct.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Right.
Yeah, right. That has been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item number five, financial matters.
Financial matters. We are going strong into the end of fiscal 2019. We are 83% through the year and our revenues are already over 100% of our projected for 2019, so that's fantastic. We will come in over budget on revenues. Just a reminder of the budget variations that we are anticipating in the final expenses for the year. There will be, some will be going over, there will be offsets in other budget lines going under. This is particularly true within the personnel, wage and salary lines as an aggregate, and also the maintenance lines as an aggregate. Ian's still getting a handle on where he's charging things to, et cetera, and what makes the most sense. So we should be good in all those offsets. For the capital replacement fund, we have about $65,000 in HVAC closeout costs that will be paid in December. That is the final payment to MCI as well as the final payment to Alara. We are anticipating coming in about $33,000 under our projected expenditures for, or our budgeted expenditures for the capital replacement fund, and I will do a complete balance projection report in January for the board. And with canceling the December board meeting, what will happen in, at the January board meeting? We will simply ratify the invoices in arrears, just like we do for payroll on a regular basis now. Those invoices will simply be paid on schedule by the village, and then we will have, you will get your full reports in the January board packet. And also, Barnali is new with us, and just to remind everyone that as we get to the end of the fiscal year, you will get 2019 fiscal year financials and 2020, as we start to have during December particularly, there's a lot of overlap into the beginning of January where things are paid and they're actually allocated to the previous or upcoming budget year. So you will be seeing two sets, so that's always a little odd, and then we don't actually get the final year-end expenditures until usually February. So that's kind of our normal schedule with those.
When I said that the operating expenditures are at 80%, do you expect it to come in slightly under 100?
Yeah. We generally come in somewhere more like 90 to 95%.
I did not have any questions on financials. Do we have any questions on financials? Do we have a motion to approve the financials as presented?
I want to approve the financials.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call please?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Crotea, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. Trustee Greer.
Yes, thank you very much. The financial matters have been approved. We're now on to agenda item number six, public comment on agenda items. Ed, do you have any public comment on agenda items?
Glad to see everybody again, and I don't mind that being on the record.
Okay, we're on to agenda item number seven, which is public comment on other library business. Okay, thank you, Ed. We're now on to agenda item number eight, A, the 2020 board meeting's schedule.
And this, the 2020 schedule, other than our normal variation in November and December, is the fourth Wednesday of each month. We did verify that the March meeting is the week before spring break for districts 58 and 99. That is our, we have moved it in the past when it coincided with spring break.
My only thoughts on this were, and this is more of a, you know, what, I think this is customary, what we've been doing as far as the November and December, but just as far as getting things scheduled, should we put it at November 18th? And I was thinking November 18th and December 16th, just because I, I.
We could do that. The, I believe the bylaws currently say that they're generally the second, but you get to ratify that and you get to make changes.
Oh, so the bylaws do say the second. Oh, yeah, November and December.
Second, second, I'd say, those two months. It's customary.
Yeah, because at one point, this board actually met twice a month, on the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month.
Okay.
And the board bylaws still, I think the board bylaws still stay.
No, actually, the last time we changed it, we made it one a month, the fourth Wednesdays, and then we changed it to in November and December, the second.
Somewhere around somewhere.
Does it still say it on the website?
Well, what, well, notwithstanding what's in the bylaws, I mean, should we push it back a little? I mean, that is, it's up to the board or not, because I'm just wondering.
If, now this year, we're canceling it this summer.
Yes.
It's not been our habit, but it could.
It could unlock a lot of library boards to exercise in December if they can.
We could wait to make that decision later, obviously. If it's the 16th, I'll probably miss it.
So I would say unless we have a consensus, I would just leave it the way that it is. On November 11th, December.
If somebody else does, it's fine.
Especially on November 11th, we'll be okay with the financials.
It's gonna be, Caitlin says no. They're, no.
It's always tough on the second, so we could.
It would really just be the cards. But I would have them done even in time for the meeting, so it would have to be since New Year's.
Well, even for November 18th.
Not for November 18th, for November 11th, I would not have it. They would be at a time.
Okay. I think we, I kind of like moving it to November 18th, just because it doesn't, I looked at the way it works out, it doesn't really interfere with.
Yeah, that's better for you.
Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Thanksgiving is two weeks later.
Yes, yeah, Thanksgiving is late now.
I have a problem with changing it to the 18th. A lot of, which is what it's on the list right now, it has to be better as a date. It's another challenge, but.
Do you think of changing the December meeting just on the list and might cancel it?
Well, I'm not saying we should cancel it at this point.
Well, now, just to put it on the list for the 16th.
I was meaning to get it on the 9th, but canceling it, we need to, if we're able to provide a motion. But if it is the 16th, I'll probably have to miss it.
Well, let's, if, I think we're in agreement, if we have a motion to approve the board meeting schedule with the one modification and changing November 11th to November 18th.
Yes, I will move to adjust our calendar for next year's meeting to November 18th instead of November 11th. And approve the 2020 schedule.
So. We have a motion to approve the 2020 board meeting schedule with the one modification, moving November 11th to November 18th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, we have approved the board meeting schedule. Thank you very much. We're now on to agenda item 8B, the 2020 holiday closing schedule.
And these are our typical closings, and that does include the staff in-service day and our special closings for Grow Fest. We did make sure we had the right dates for Grow Fest. And yeah, just a note that we do, we are closed on the Sundays of Memorial Day and Labor Day weekends. Those are just administrative closings, so they're not paid, as well as closing at 5:00 on New Year's and Easter's.
I also double-checked on the staff in-service day, it doesn't fall on whatever the days where the kids are off to school, so.
Yeah, so we did double-check that.
What staff in-service day move around?
It actually tends to be that third Friday in January, but we had the extra in-service day due to the HVAC project because we had to be closed to the public on Tuesday after Labor Day.
That's what I was thinking.
So, yes. So we went ahead and had an extra in-service day for staff, so everyone still got paid and just were closed to the public, and Jen planned us a really fantastic day of training.
Has staff reviewed, thought about, in recent years, the Grow Fest closing schedule, see if it's still appropriate?
Yeah, we actually had a discussion about whether or not we should close a little bit earlier or stay open, or it, this really does seem to work as far as staff coming in and leaving, and the parking situation, and the crowd situations for Grow Fest, so I, it's pretty much definitely a suck.
Yeah, I would think that for all these years, because Grow Fest has been rolling for 10 years, but it went on for many years before, whatever. Do we get any use from the public in those closings or sort of then on?
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 2020 holiday closing schedule?
Um.
Go to second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the 2020 holiday closing schedule that's been seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, we have approved the 2020 holiday closing schedule. We're now on to agenda item 8C, the 2019-2 resolution of appreciation for staff milestone anniversaries. And should we approve this first, or have me read it in?
Either way, that one's all you.
I will read the resolution, and then presumably we will approve the resolution at that point. Okay, so this is resolution number 19, number 2019-2, which is a resolution of appreciation for the service of staff members who have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2019. Whereas 10 members of the Downers Grove Public Library staff have celebrated milestone service anniversaries in 2019 totaling 80 years as follows. For five years, Sandy Bonomo, Dawn Goliath, Fred LaBaron, Erin Lindzenmeyer, Max Magavero, Mary Pillar, Kira Riddle, and then under 10 years, we have Maggie Moore. In 15 years, we have our very own Caitlin Vabalitis. Congratulations. And then under, for 20 years, we have Pat Kujawa. And whereas the committed services of these staff members has contributed significantly to the library's high level of performance and high reputation in the community, and whereas 2019 has provided many new opportunities for service, including development of satellite stacks, the Anything Emporium, an organization of the month, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Library Trustees recognizes with great appreciation the dedication and perseverance of these staff members, and thanks them, thanks them for their outstanding work. Unanimously approved, this 13th, the day of November 2019, by the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Downers Grove. So let's, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 2019-2?
I will try and follow it. Hopefully unanimously approve of this resolution.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I like doing a roll call on this one, so we can all show our support.
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Humphreys.
Yes.
Trustee Crotea, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Greer.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved resolution number 2019-2.
We have to sign that.
Yes. Should I sign this? This is the official version?
I have the official.
Okay. Thank you. That's much better. Don't mess it up.
Each of those staff members gets a copy of that, and they also, they're recognized at the Staffing and Service Day, and also during their milestone anniversary year, each of those staff members receives an additional person.
I can't believe you've been here 15 years.
No, that's okay.
You started.
Caitlin was 12 when you started.
All right, we're now on to agenda item 8D, fiscal year 2020, Illinois Public Library PerCapta grant application requirements. That's a mouthful, so.
Yes, and so, things will be interesting next year. They have not yet put out what their requirements are for 2021 and beyond. If you've been playing along at home, the State Library actually published in FY17 the requirements for FY18 through '20, so we've known well in advance what these were going to be. And they, it's interesting because the questions they ask and what's actually listed in the requirement don't actually, don't always line up. But that being said, our first area of requirements was to read the standard, was the standards chapter review, so Serving Our Public 3.0, standards for Illinois public libraries, and it was to review the checklist in the chapter on personnel. And for that checklist, we check all the boxes quite literally, so that's a great thing. I will note to you all that the new edition of Serving Our Public will be coming out in January, so it'll be interesting to see what those new standards look like. For the trustees' requirement, you were called to review the trustee fax file, which you each have, and which we hope they will be updating yet again, because you cannot actually buy that anymore, and we don't have any more copies. So it'll be interesting to see where they, they come out on that.
In bottom line?
Yeah.
A little tighter.
Yeah.
The original version.
Yeah. So they, the chapters that you were to review, one of them was fundraising, which we are very, very lucky to have an active friends organization as well as an active foundation. Advocacy was another one of the sections, and it was quite interesting, if you read it, they had a bright, bright future and bleak future examples, and basically we lined up with everything in their bright future examples. That was lovely. One, let me turn this off for a second. One of the things I want to highlight for you all for advocacy is the Illinois Library Association's advocacy website. It's ilaa.org/adcacy. There's lots of great information on the latest issues going on, and if you look on over here, Legislative Issues is the place to go to see whatever's hot legislatively at the time, so they've got both the Illinois Legislative Issues and federal, and so this is your place to come. They'll tell you all about what's happening in the latest session. Then, Public Relations, if you had a chance to look at that chapter, we are very fortunate to have a wonderful and professional public relations staff here at the library, and so much of what they talked about in that chapter was all about community engagement and getting out and partnering and speaking with the organizations in your community. Our strategic plan spoke to that very eloquently, and we've been doing a lot of that with our organization of the month, with all of our wonderful partnerships that we're doing out there. And then, of course, there was the trustee continuing education chapter, and I know that you all have taken advantage of opportunities with the Illinois Library Association and with reaching across Illinois library system for their training opportunities. We also have the system's website is railslibraries.info, and so in, when you sign in here, among services, they have continuing education, which does include trustee training. I also wanted to point out, in one of, very relevant to what we were talking about with Carissa earlier, on the trends and what's going on in libraries and what the hot topics are, the library system has recently launched this new section of their website called the Library Pulse, and what they do is they give you a full accounting, they introduce you to the issue, they give you some information, some key articles, some links, what they're actually doing, so it really does introduce you to the full topic. So this is a wonderful thing that they are doing, and as well, when you are on the email lists, Rails does regular email, e-news, that also includes a lot of information about what's going on in libraries, as well as their continuing education opportunities. So those are all fantastic resources. Or did anybody have any comments about what you read in trustee fax file?
There are just a lot of organizations that are all to support nationally and locally. There's two page, there's other ones around Illinois that are aligned for comparable size and maybe demographics of your community, and then federally, so even the ALA is best rated around the world, and there's a lot of overarching, a ton of different sites.
Yes.
Years ago, when I would read through some of this stuff, I'd keep saying, well, how come we have to, we go through this, and we do all this stuff, and we hard as they can, and so on, and then I was reminded that not all libraries are like ours, there are a lot of libraries that have a staff of two or three people, and for them to do all this stuff to get this to take off is a huge job.
Exactly, and that's, and I think it's something that's very important to keep in mind, especially when we go through these requirements for the PerCapta grant. A lot of these, especially the continuing education requirements and the reading, is not necessarily for those of us who are in suburban Chicagoland with easy access to, you know, the trustee day was right into Lake Park. The Rails headquarters is in Burbidge. A lot of this is very convenient for us, for a lot of our much smaller libraries in southern Illinois, there is a lot, it's smaller staffs, smaller budgets, more travel time involved, all of those disadvantages, so we are very fortunate. So, let's see, and thank you all for.
Trustee Dory.
Well, do, we have to go back to it for outreach. So for continuing education, thank you all who went and did webinars or other training for the continuing education component. We had quite a few folks, as you can see from the list in my, in the board packet, quite a few folks who went out, who did webinars. That includes, I just want to shout out to Joy Max and our Adult and Teen Services Library, who actually did the Leading Tough Conversations webinar, and she did that as part of her preparation for our Month of Homelessness Awareness, and as you know, Joy was the moderator for two of those events, and she did a bang-up job, so just a shout out to Joy, and just one example of how we took information from one of those continuing education events and applied it. Several of the staff did the performance management, we're looking at our performance evaluations again. Ian did the, conducting a library facility security assessment, so he put those, those concepts into practice immediately. So we did, we allowed everyone to pick their own webinar rather than asking everyone to do the same one, and we really found that we were able to meet some of our special needs that way. And then, finally, outreach. They, they wanted you all to familiarize yourselves with the Digital Public Library of America, and this is images, texts, and videos, these are all historical items held by libraries and other organizations throughout the United States that make them publicly available, and they are arranged by topic or by partner, and they do some exhibitions. There's really interesting and wonderful information, particularly civil war and the civil rights movement, so that is a wonderful resource. And then there is the Illinois Digital Archives, which is all libraries in Illinois that are sharing their historic, primarily image collections, although the other big thing that they do here is newspapers, the old, old newspapers.
So I didn't see anything about a Scrope there.
And so that is one of the big things that, we actually had to check a yes text box out here, because their question was, would your library like to receive a follow-up phone call from the Illinois State Library if there is any original source materials relevant to Illinois history and culture that would be appropriate for possible inclusion? Well, a couple of years ago, we did a digitization project for the Downers Grove Reporter. We actually have that newspaper from 1895 to 1922. Those are all of the ones that were out of copyright at the time that we did the digitization project, so we will be looking at getting those included. So that's, that's exciting, and it's something that our Adult and Teen Services staff have been talking about, you know, how do we get, what should we do with this, what's our next step, making it available more widely, and then talking about looking at grants to do the next portion as they come out of copyright.
Do we, do I need any conjunction with the Downers Grove Museum? There's so much history there.
Yes, with the. With the, we participate with the Historical Society, Friends of Edward House, the museum. Primarily, our staff gets an orientation to Downers Grove history. When a new librarian comes on staff, they get a full tour of the historical museum. And we have done some events with them when we did this digitization project. They actually came out and did a display in the lobby of the library as part of the kickoff for that digital collection. So we do work with them on, trying to read what was he wrote? Our library staff create finding aids that assist the public in using those local history collections as well as on information and services provided at the historical museum. And we also have had a number of presentations by staff from both the Historical Museum and Historics, Historical Society members. Another other? There you go. Those are all your wonderful links.
Okay, thank you very much. It's very interesting. Can we go back and be held of all these papers? It is kind of interesting that we're being around at a historical event and seeing what they were writing in the time versus what we, you know, see in retrospect. Okay, we're on to Agenda Item 9A. Unfinished business, the personnel policy, 3.50 personal time. I think we are asked to approve an updated MS.
Yes, and as, as we discussed at the previous meeting, these are, the personal time and vacation time recommendations are both based on the compensation philosophy that the board passed back in June. That stated that for benefits, we match the local library competitor market. So what we, what I did is went and actually looked at the surveys for library benefits and looked at what other libraries are giving. So these two recommendations would bring us into line with what other libraries are giving. Your questions had been, what are the impacts for the personal time that is going from two to three personal days? And it would expand the category of employees eligible from full-time staff only to full-time staff through part-time staff working 15 hours a week or more. And that matches our local library competitor market. That would affect 31 full-time staff and 16 part-time staff members. It would be prorated, of course, to be authorized hours for the year as is our custom for part-time staffs paid time off. It would be a total of 211 additional prorated days for the change. The approximate cost is just under $20,000 for the year in personal time. Operationally, we do actually include an allotment of substitute hours in each public service department, or actually in every department, each year. So we do have about a dozen subs on our, on our payroll. These are folks who are not regularly scheduled but who come in and do fill-in shifts when people are on vacation, covering for maternity leaves, for example, and that sort of thing. We have those folks who are able to come in in addition to the part-time staff who have the capacity to take up an additional shift here and there. So that is actually worked into our budget as we stand now. Operationally, the managers have all agreed that they believe that their current substitute hour allotment would allow them to do both the personal time and vacation time proposals that we would just come a lot closer. We, as I may have alluded to, I don't remember if I actually said it, in wage and salaries for 2019, we're estimated to come in about $60,000 under budget in aggregate in wage and salary. If we don't use all of the hours that we currently budget is what it comes down to. And they believe that we would just get closer. So they do believe that the capacity ticked.
So it's not free, but we don't probably have to change the budget, but we may end up with a little small order to be in writing. So it's not free, but it's the right thing to do because we need to stay with that.
Right, no, I think that, from my perspective, I did want to see kind of what the cost was just so we could, you know, weigh that. But it does, based on the research that was done, based on what our competitors are doing, it just, this is a point.
We're doing the number of the book pages.
Right. So do we have any questions or comments on? Do we have a motion to approve the amended personnel policy set for Agenda Item 9A?
I will move to approve Agenda Item 9A. First question.
We have a second. Okay. Caitlin, let's, because we have talked about the impact on the budget thing, let's just proceed with the roll call on this one.
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Humphries. Trustee Gutierrez. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Gray.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item 9A, the personnel, amended personnel policy, the provision 3.50. We're now on to Agenda Item 9B, which is the Personnel Policy, Section 3.49 Vacation, which I think this also is a slight modification.
Yes, and so what this does is it expands the category that starts at two weeks of vacation to other full-time, non-professional employees and to include part-time employees working 15 hours a week or more. So this affects 38 part-time employees. They, it would be approximately 190 additional vacation days. And again, operationally, we do believe that this will be accommodated within those substitute hours that are already budgeted. The approximate cost is just under $10,000 per year. And I hope that the, the actual change in the policy, I hope you kind of followed along on the, what was, what was added and what was struck.
Yeah, we have done this before.
Do we have a motion to approve the updated Section 3.49 in the Personnel Policy?
I will motion to update the Section 3.49. Whatever.
What he said.
What he said, as presented, yes. As presented, yes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Also.
Caitlin, can you proceed with the roll call on this one?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Humphries.
Yes.
Trustee Gutierrez, yes. Trustee Stapleton, yes. President Gray.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item 9B, the updated Personnel Policy, Section 3.49 Vacation. And now we're on to Agenda Item Number 10, the Library Director's Report.
I think some of the best news that we have is that we will have a social work intern starting in January, and we will have a second social work intern starting in May. So we are very excited about having social work interns here at the library. And I think that it will really help us in our services and with our partnerships. So. For the Foundation Board and our piece of artwork, we do not yet have an official date for the unveiling, though we do anticipate it will be sometime in February. They were hoping for January, but the artist is actually going to be, Melissa Leander will be an artist in residence during the entire month of January out of state. So she will not be available for the unveiling dates in January. So there was also a small glitch in the framing. She had estimated the framing and cover for the work and it turned out her estimate was a little low. But Monday, the Foundation ordered okay, moving forward with the additional amount for the framing. So we're moving.
It's a large frame.
It is, it's a, it's a big piece. So yeah, it's a big plexiglass box is what it comes down to. So, but we're so excited about it. And we've been talking about some possible children's programming around it. Allison and I were just talking today about possibly doing a special art program over spring break that is themed around the new artwork.
Do we know where the artwork is physically located at this point in time?
Arizona. Since it was the two pieces that they're putting together, one of the pieces was on exhibit in Arizona and the other one, the artist still had in her studio.
And she's in Chicago.
Yes, yes. She's.
Well, she's from Miami or Forest, or I think she's in.
She actually teaches at the Art Institute of Chicago. She's an instructor. So she does have a studio in the city. But the piece that had been in Arizona returned to her recently. So they, they should be able to be out for framing within the next couple of months. And then, if anyone did not get a chance, our Hometown Veterans Display with Republic Bank is upstairs by the Ask Us desk. We got some really fantastic pictures of veterans and we're able to really honor our veterans locally. So thank you Caitlin, that's a great idea. These were, these are the kinds of displays, and it's really wonderful to be able to host these kinds of exhibits and things that really draw attention to important topics or fun things or honor our veterans and other really wonderful local times. I think that's it.
Okay, do we have any? Okay, so that, we're finished with Agenda Item 10, Library Director's Report. We're now on to Agenda Item 11, Trustee Commerce and Request for Information.
Just to relate it to the last discussion, there was some talk about maybe some kind of an event of unveiling.
The Foundation is still working on that, yes. They are also talking about doing a fundraiser in conjunction, possibly a newly artist kind of pre move.
It's made, you know, it's splash, we didn't have much of a splash for it. I think of.
Still splashing?
I shouldn't say it probably. We had a big splash about the month long program on homelessness and homelessness for care classes. It's all well received from people high school. But like, people don't know what this whole guy is.
I do have a few different comments since I did so many hours of reading. So they talk, one of the things I read was about like the lobby days ALA does in DC.
Yes.
Is there really legislation that it can strongly affect all the libraries across the US?
The number one thing is actually the funding to the Institute of Museum and Library Services, I M L S. They do, these are really the only federal funds that are, that come to libraries at all. And so that is the number one thing that we lobby for at those.
We used probably Downers Grove, it's probably never been represented in.
But I mean, but you are essentially represented by virtue of the fact that they're looking out for.
Yes, yeah, no, I'm just.
And the Illinois Library Association, they regularly send a delegation. So people serving on the Public Policy Committee or ILA Board and the Executive Director of the Illinois Library Association go regularly and advocate on our behalf to make sure that that funding continues to flow. And do remember that that is how the state of Illinois shores up the Illinois Public Library per capita grants every year. When funding at the state level was cut, they used these federal funds to keep that at the statutory level. On the flip side, it means there are fewer competitive grants for libraries in the state of Illinois because that's what that money used to be.
I remember a couple of times during the time when it looked like that money at the federal was in danger of being cut and we were asked to write it for the public.
And then something else I read about, which made me think of the Anything Emporium, was different things that people check out, cake pans, bikes, fishing poles. I know you had brought up bikes. So why did we move the drop box or close it?
It is increasingly problematic that when, when the drop box was put there, the village had, I've agreed to change the flow of the alley. It's actually on the wrong side of the car. And so people are regularly stopping in the no parking zone, jumping out of their car, using that book drop. It is also, that alleyway is the primary delivery area for those businesses that back up. So it is just very congested and a dangerous spot. You just don't want people walking around back there.
It's probably got more busy with some of those businesses.
Exactly. And particularly now, you know, the former Paradise Cafe was closed for so long, now it's becoming a restaurant as foot traffic to the bike shop and the dog grooming place. Yeah. So it, it really did.
Never reopening, right? So the locations are at the, the south entrance, the north entrance.
And then out at Forest Avenue at the end of the handicapped accessible ramp. And there is now a fully striped, though you can't see it right now, 15-minute parking space directly in front of it to, to facilitate people just stopping and returning their books there.
Yeah, that alley thing, sure. Back in the day, when we had less communication with the village, the book drop was put there with the assumption, more than assumption, the village said that they were to reverse the flow of traffic in the alley. So it's for people coming from a parking lot, south, they'd go north with the book drops on the driver's side. And so you put that book drop, had a new response to some request from the community and informed we had, that the village never reversed it and now they said they're not going to do it. Plus the traffic. So it just doesn't make sense.
It might be some security play.
In particular, it's always a little safer not to have the book drop that goes directly in the building.
There's always the danger that somebody will put something in the book and it's issued. And that's not quite as specific as, as.
I thought, wait, I might have one more. Oh, well, in your notes, Jen, I had read that you had to deal with alcohol in the library. That's probably the first time that I read it, but I'm sure it's not the first time in your experience of the library.
We had a lot of incidents this spring with alcohol in the library. And reviewing our procedures and our code of conduct, you know, we're giving people a bit of a doubt and just the instant lesson. So we just took a hard stance on alcohol. Somebody appeared to be under the influence now or either they were under the influence of them, you know, that we have in the library. And we retired that employee. And so my. Am I speaking to what you were.
Yes, yeah, exactly. And I think one of your CE credits, someone, I thought it was you, was like dealing with harassing or unpleasant patrons too.
We actually, we had an ALA workshop webinar for interns, yeah.
Yes. And fortunately, those incidents not went across fingers, have been on the downward trend recently, so.
We're taking out that topic.
I just want to say, I appreciate you highly of the Pulse feature, the Pulse feature on the library website. Another resource that I was recently aware of, I probably all heard of, but it's a group of library forecasting. I think that Canister, library, I don't know if it's right now, I don't know if it's known as, they're going to be holding a forecasting discussion around climate change and its impact on our communities and our libraries at the RBA on December 3rd. And the operating staff research, I think they're going to come to the conference today. I had never heard of it, but inside it, I love their discussions, really interesting and thoughtful, thinking, very like broad, regional topics that go beyond like typical kind of library discussions, which is, and then a little bit of.
Do we have any additional trustee comments or requests for information? All right, then we're onto Agenda Item Number 12, and I adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.